I got, I got from the shake. And five, we have five, we now have two of that one, but. Four of my ladies, they were. Hi, how are you? Still looking for.
Molly, I was walking through the, you could be a whole, could be. Yeah, well, I saw your name tag on the door. I was like, I was like, I didn't know that name. No, this is a couple of months ago. I was there for some random meeting. Uh huh.
Is your cock. He's, he's crowing for sure.
Oh, and then let him see. My work.
Way like he doesn't do. Well, it's good. Yeah. Everything. Javier, uh, could I turn those back off?
Yes.
I have a library, so I'm on day four of this.
Yeah, that switch right there.
Thanks. Growing your hair.
I need to get an air bud.
She needs.
So I want to get a little bit off the side.
They can find a front party. All right.
While we're recording.
Okay. Those are the best talking. Okay, all members are in attendance, we got four. Um, can we agree to the agenda? Move someone thing. I know. Hey, the good mind is not getting with that. Alright, so um, second, 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 all in favor? Alright, relevant action advice and all council.
First, we had a special meeting last week and we reviewed a grant for police equipment. The chief wanted to have us meet occasionally if wise to have a resolution or at least a consensus of the council on a grant that we pursued, so chief wanted to have a discussion about it. It would be about getting a sign, like an electric sign for a grant and also I think it was fifty cones that would go with it, that would be used by on fourth July or something like that, and it'd be. Uh, the town would be out about five thousand dollars if we get it. And so he had to fly forward, but that was kind of meeting about that. We also have another grant submitted through the safety committee. That's I lean chair. And it was for the E nine eleven reflective signs, which you would put on all the properties in the town and something that was will be, we'll find out about in May if we get that particular brand. It has not.
I have, I have one. There are three nine eleven. Well, they're just, it's like a modern reflective sign for. So that emergency vehicles will know.
So your, your place is having, but yeah, I see, I guess the project is that not everybody has this works with a. Something for.
Do we have any understanding why maybe start doing some, is that something from the past?
I don't know, I, I do not know that. I just know that it's a grant request that they did to try to get everybody to have it.
We don't have one. You don't, okay, no, and it. It was, yeah, it was. I'm actually the first that are in the immediate, immediate town area, they don't have it and they're on the outside too. And that would be a fair assumption, but. Can't imagine this world.
It's basically a way to help facilitate these identifying.
And you would be like, if you have a long dog or there's something making that other roads, maybe they would churn it.
That's a, that's a good idea, it's just the, the new committee that's looked at various issues, this, this kind of came by on their list.
I'm just kind of thinking about how the in town, where if we go in town, you know, for example, the businesses on Valley Street, do they need it? My house on Heritage Street, I, I don't even know where I can go because there's parking on the streets and get blocked by the cars unless it's on telephone pole, okay?
That's a good question, I can, I can get more particulars related to how they vision.
You're gonna meet with A R B this Thursday, discussing a little bit too.
Okay. I mean aesthetically, of course, we want to be safe. Okay, yeah.
In the regular session, we voted to have social clubs by rights. So after lots of discussion, y'all have a meeting with that issue that finally was passed in the last town council meeting. We also did the same thing with I, I think I recall laundry dry cleaners by right. And we deferred on the conversation about the fire department. Do we will were a bit in differing opinions and we felt like it was live to talk to the town attorney was, he comes once a month, he wasn't there, so we thought let's talk to him next week in the work session about that. We talked a little bit also on the issue, which is still out there for future conversation related to there's a couple of town councilors that are interested in either changing the night of the meetings or the time of the meetings and that's still on, that, that's a topic for the future. And that would be my chair.
Okay. Thank you. That was from the poll, is anyone online?
Yeah, just change, exchange in place there. Could send a message, but.
I think she would love us know she wanted to, she'll text me. Uh, old business, Lincoln's, oh, I. Right, hi Lincoln.
Hello, hi. Oh, rainy night already tonight, so. Let's go here.
It's raining.
Okay, so you should have your printouts, uh, presentation. I'd like to propose this agenda, um, first, we talked about a meeting we had in February with Alamo County. Cause I think quite important. Then we have a consultation meeting with the Savannah planning team tomorrow. Uh, that was just scheduled, so I'll explain that. Then, uh, comp plan text updates, I've been emailing you a few things, I received some comments, thanks, thanks everyone so much. Um, then we have some parcel data information, uh, and then scheduled for remaining work. So the conversation with Alamo County, uh, basically, uh, Lisa Javier and I were, were here and Alamo County brought quite a team. Uh, at least five people, yeah. So, uh, the main purpose was to follow up from our September meeting. Where we consulted on planning, uh, you know, development areas, so's and so forth, uh, but also to kind of coordinate on ongoing planning matters, I mean, at least in forty four, we've got to understand how that process is going. And, uh, basically I composed an email recap of that, that meeting, um, I just distributed to Javier and Lisa for any textual comments before I sent, because I think it is an important record. So I'll just go through the main points here. Basically, we're talking about the AC forty four process and they had a, a recent meeting at, um, Yancey on February twelve. So they're mentioning about these community resilience hubs. And they're looking at designating some places in the county to be a resilience hub. And then, uh, you know, we thought that, you know, Victor Hall was mentioned of, you know, in the capital blue plan, we might need to check the wiring and add a generator here. Be kind of like an emergency preparedness center. So, uh, the county, uh, mentioned, oh, there could be some funding available, so this is designated, so it seems like a win win for everyone. Certain rural region and also the town.
What did they define a resilience hub as, like emergency?
You know, I don't think they've, uh, to my knowledge, kind of written down the exact definition yet, it's kind of still brewing, we may see forty four process. Uh, James Exchange, uh, you know, I mean, a few days ago, the Yancey is also being considered a resilience hub, the elementary school, I guess, um, which makes sense, kind of like a shelter and soul support. But I see it as an opportunity for the town, maybe get some funding for a generator, maybe the wiring checked out, soul support, and this could be formally designated as a as a resilience hub or the, the building itself as a shelter. Um, so what I proposed, uh, in the text for Victory Hall, I'll just come to that in a few minutes, but I've added that, that recommendation that this designation be pursued or considered. If, if that's how you want to proceed on that. So that's, that's number one, uh, number two is road infrastructure, we, we talked, uh, quite a, a bit about, uh, where counties prioritization of road and, uh, intersection improvements. So I think we've talked about this, you know, over the last, uh, six or nine months, a little bit here and there, but basically the county has a, a list of eighty nine intersections or road sections that really need to be improved. And we are very last on the list. The county, the county basically said that, uh, oh, the last page is just not in any order, but we were last on the list, last time in twenty fourteen list, so I do kind of, and you know, I kind of read the T's of, uh, Route twenty and J River Road is the very last on the priority list. And our other intersection is not, not even on the list. So there was a discussion whether, uh, town intersection should be on the list because the James River Road, uh, intersection and Route twenty is right on the, the boundary of the town. You know, right next to the bank and other, and the, so and so forth, the, the gas station, um. So basically the county staff told us the prioritization, uh, you know, consideration, and they said that they're open to us writing a letter. Uh, explaining our, our, our concerns. So we could explain about Tiger Fuel, that intersection, we could explain about hardware or other concerns. Uh, and then they would consider that just a patient, maybe they would re-prioritize. So that'd be one, uh, method for the town to, uh, advocate for more uh, concern and maybe funding for, for intersections. So, uh, listen, Javier, please jump in.
Well, I mean. They did say that it wasn't in priority order, right? But, um, they also did say, well, the development there could make it more of a priority, so they're acknowledging that. Um, and I, I, I still think that they need to pay for all that stuff because we don't we pay properties taxes, so they have to do the work regardless of whether we're a town or not.
It does make sense that all intersections in the town be considered on that list because, uh, like we want to, but they look at those taxes, right? So maybe that could be a recommendation in this, uh, transportation plan to, to make that clear, uh, with the county.
Yeah, and. You don't tell out of that, we are an entrance corridor for two counties in town, moral county, so we are for, for business coming in. Uh, I'm not telling anything, this is new to anyone who has friends or family around the area. So people use all our town to get in to, and a growth business in the county, so that's another aspect we could touch upon in any letter or comment to them.
Who's draft are you drafting on?
Um, well, maybe through this transportation plan, we can, uh, think a little bit more and then, uh, in parallel, write the letter. A simple letter, but, uh, you know.
So remind me, I saw a post somewhere that had a picture of a camera, like a V dot camera or something like that. And someone said, they're here, you know? And I haven't really followed up to see that was all about, do you all know?
Uh, I, I did see something like that on the James Exchange, for instance.
How was that?
I believe it was.
Yeah, sure. Well, they, they mentioned that they were doing a new traffic study in relation to some of the developments. I think they were.
Could I email you back later this week? I'll have a monthly meeting with some of the E docs staff and I'll ask, I might a lot missed it in some of the announcements they've shared of the whole county.
Okay.
That might give us.
Okay.
Information. So that was, uh, road infrastructure. Then we talked about the OP, uh, gap grant. So you might remember that, uh, OP, uh, told me over the phone that, uh, we're missing a county letter of support. But during the said meeting with Alamo County, we understand that Alamo County actually made a submission for us with the letter of support, um, so it seems like we, we, uh, the town could be, uh, you know, approached this in an organized fashion in the future, yeah.
So what was that saying, or is there some follow up or?
Well, I'm not sure, you know, uh, previous town administrator and I can't, there was a government communication, I guess, let's let it go. That's what they expressed, but.
So you guys are on it? Right, are you on it or am I on? Are you ever good? No.
The, the, the next window, if I recall correctly, is potentially September for that grant, September of this year. Um, and it's on the uh, V trans or also known as OP website. Office of Infrastructure Planning and so forth, yes.
Well. And.
And this is going to be recommendation in the comp plan to apply for such grant.
Well, and I, I think we should figure out what our priorities are for it and make sure we, we can have that conversation since they need to submit it for us and make sure that they are, um, including it in their budget too.
I think that's a really good point, uh, their budget. Uh, because we learned from our previous conversation with Tom and Jeff's and planning commission that, uh, they do not have budget to help, uh, the town of Scottsville. But, uh, the county, and they recommend relying on the county. So, uh, I think the, the budget I need to add into the test. Yeah. So moving on, Alamo Water Protection ordinances, um, so, um, this conversation, uh, was just to check how a development in, uh, Scottsville would come under, uh, the water protection ordinance of the county. Or critical slopes, so it was unclear from our discussion, uh, uh, definitive answer on that. Uh, so I would recommend that the town might want to, uh, cover any, uh, gaps, uh, in, in this matter, uh, in an upcoming planning commission meeting, so and so forth, yeah. Because, uh, for instance, uh, development in the northeast part of town, uh, really has a lot to do with stream buffers, right? And we've heard from a lot of stakeholders that, uh, we need to conserve and steward our environment, right? So if there was a, a, a gap in our ordinances, uh, it could be a very significant gap. And then other things like objectives, like creating, uh, easements or other, um, you know, community benefits of that, of that area could fall, fall on the wayside very quickly. So, um, I would recommend maybe the, the agenda for the next planning commission, we might want to consider that, that item, yeah. Quite quickly.
Well, so to that end, can we look at what the county's plan is and see if it's something that we can adapt?
Yes, uh, so the county recommended contacting this, uh, Mr. Poehl, P O H L. So I know Javier, you had tried to contact him or?
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to set up a meeting, let's say.
So, um, the county also had their, uh, WPO water protection ordinances is currently a standalone ordinance. But it's moving to, to go under the zoning ordinance in the future for the county. So that's another, uh, potential gap, so for instance, um, you know, since, uh, Scottsville has its own planning commission, uh, it does not follow the county zoning ordinance, do you mean? So if the stream buffer goes under the, the county zoning ordinance and the town doesn't follow or adopt a similar ordinance, there would be a, a gap, yeah.
Do we know James River Association consults and things like this? I mean, they have an office written down, I'm sure they know more than we do. Yeah, there's probably other groups too, like Jessica Washington. Yeah, but I'm sure there's people that can advise better. Matthew Holt had suggested that Thomas Jefferson sort of the water conservation desk, but I think they, I think he had mentioned they only work with like farms, I don't know that they work with us as a town, but it's worth talking to them.
Never hurts.
Okay, so, um, I would suggest that we will, uh, talk in advance of, of next meeting and see how this either is a recommendation in the comp plan, when it's adopted, uh, sooner than then. You know, very, very quickly. So, um, the, you know, this also goes along with other considerations that the town has been having regarding fire inspections, whether the, the, the state is responsible or the county. So this is a similar matter. Okay, um, moving on, number five is, uh, Scottsville Public Use Maps, I think, uh, Mr. Grisco, you, you suggested this consideration. So basically the county suggested with G I S colleague is the best person to advise how we can get Scottsville Lake and other, uh, icons shown on the map.
Who, who is the G I S colleague?
So I think, I think Lisa, you were messaging with him, uh, last month, so maybe I'll pick up the the email that you, you had with the G I S guy.
Okay.
Now, one thing I will say on that front too is the more that we can be on those sites, there's, there's also cool apps that are out there that make people interested, but you have to have the geograph, the geography straits for them to do it, that, yeah. And that, one of the main ones that I, that was my gripe was just in Google, you don't see the Scottsville Lake, but that's not the only thing.
Isn't there a media with Parks and Rec? Have my Parks and Rec too. Uh, about fantasy. Oh, we did mention that too, I don't know about Parks and Rec.
Wasn't part of it, but I know some people. Yeah. So she's on the Parks and Rec Committee, but I haven't heard her report back on that.
So, uh, the last item was they asked, what are, as a town's priorities for AC forty four? So one of our big considerations was social services, um. You know, we explained that a goal of the comp plan, uh, as proposed is community, uh, designate, you know, Scottsville and show the value as a rural hub, which it is, right? There are not only one county, Alamo, but also three counties. Um, so they asked, oh, what sort of social service if you have here, and then they responded, we, you don't have a lot. So they directed us to two colleagues, uh, from the county, Alamo County, uh, and we did talk about housing, affordable housing is a, is a big priority within social services, so. Uh, but in terms of the county planning staff, they, they weren't really able to respond much on social services. But hopefully this can be a priority in AC forty four somehow. Then, uh, you know, I mentioned the library in the twenty fifteen, uh, current comp plan, the library specifically mentioned as important to retain, which means it could be taken away. So I said, we, we need to keep something like that in there. Then, uh, we reemphasized Scottsville should be consistently shown on maps, and I think they got that message. And, uh, then, uh, the most interesting for me and potentially most important is, uh, county staff were asking about, uh, county development areas. So they, they highlighted that there has been discussion of potentially develop, designated, uh, a development area just outside of Scottsville's boundary. Uh, they, it did say that basically, um, currently the county is not looking to designate anything anywhere, but they're focusing on the definition of how a place can be designated in the future. So for instance, the, the growth ring or, you know, around Rio Road, now this is, how do they expand that? Or how do they add a new development area, potentially that down here? So, um, then we talked about Alamo County Service Corner, the sewer coverage, because that's an important thing for a growth area, and there's a lot of extra capacity down here. Scottsville has not reached its development potential, right, and we have a lot of, uh, greenfield sites, but, but could be developed soon, right? So, uh, my recommendation is, is not to, uh, you know, advocate for good, indicating any development areas down here, but just to, uh, see, wait and see what happens and focus on Scottsville's development, yeah, for the time being. So, um.
AC forty four, just a question from the latest, the county wouldn't overrule us, would they, so to speak?
Um, well, the, the, the planning staff even asked, oh, what, what does Scottsville think, uh, about expanding your boundaries? I was really surprised by that question.
Right.
So there's a lot of, uh, a lot of considerations in that, that's why I would suggest that the town fully consider the matter, uh, and, and not really advocating anything at this moment, um. Uh, suggests, sticking with the status quo. Um, but of course, that's up to the, the town council and such, yeah, sure. Uh, this, this is just a staff level discussion, we could call it, yeah, and explore, the, the county staff were exploring all the possibilities for good planning, right? I guess that's how I would phrase it.
Yeah, that's what I would characterize, I think those are the conversations you have, because any successful developments, and it would have to have some cooperation. Well, it doesn't always, but, uh, um, I think it's just something to kind of consider as we're.
The reason, the reason I'm asking that is, it's no secret, we had a big, like, as a town, we got pretty divided over that issue, like, I don't think it'd be safe at all for the, I mean, whether we ever became a development zone or not, I think it'd be quicker to say from what happened several years ago. There's a significant number of people that wouldn't want that, so to speak, so, you know, you know, so I guess my question was more the sense of the county wouldn't eye something and then kind of force someone else, we speak, they're gonna try to cooperate with us in the process.
Uh, I, I think immediately, I have the, the Alamo County staff have been really collaborative, yeah. I've been really impressed, uh, so, yeah, I wouldn't say that anyone, uh, would potentially do that, I just would say that there needs to be a lot of consideration.
Oh, sure.
And I raised an, an issue, you know, oh, if, uh, a development area is designated just outside of Scottsville, would, would there be, uh, uh, competition, you know? For instance, some, some, uh, states have competition, you, for instance, I'm from Kansas City area. You know, Kansas City, Missouri tries to bring people, Kansas City, Kansas buys them over, so and so forth, yeah. So it is a consideration, um, and the county does have, uh, rural guidelines. So currently, you know, a lot of development could not happen on strongly going northward. But if it was changed into a development in separate area, then there could be a lot more, uh, you could characterize it as potential sprawl. So why would, why would, uh, a development want to do it in the town if there's a potential property tax in the future? Why not just go just outside of town and catch everyone on the road, right? So I think those are all things that have to be, uh, you know, considered and balanced, yeah.
Isn't most of, between here and Charlotte, so in conservation, isn't it?
Yeah, a lot, lot of the area. So I think these are just things that have to be looked into, to, in, more in detail and, uh, considered in the bigger picture by the county, do you mean? I, I was kind of surprised that they had, they admitted to having conversations about this growth area around Scottsville, yeah.
So were they serious enough about it that they had some drawings or anything like that going on, like where they were thinking about this then, or was it just a?
Uh, it's just a verbal conversation, but this is the second meeting we've talked about it.
Yeah. Well, and it wasn't like, hey, you want to build out there, it was more like what a Scottville wants and, and is it something you guys are talking about? Who you want this and do, you know, they know about the visitations, so. Yeah, I'll just stop talking about property taxes.
Well, th- this exact matter was discussed during the town's strategic planning, uh, development, as we call it, um. So it, it is, uh, a good, it's good to discuss all the possibilities, I guess we'd say, yeah. Because I think the county does have a lot of growth pressures, right? So they're, they're, they're factoring, where can this growth go, where? And development area can promote affordable housing, all of these other things we're talking about, so it's a balancing act, uh, where, where should things go, so and so forth, yeah.
One thing to consider is, uh, probably for you is historically.
Historically, uh, we had discussions about a social services hub here in the town. And not just like a, like the county placing maybe a benefits worker here. Uh, because benefits go through the state, and so there was like a. A setup where maybe people could apply for social service benefits through a computer here. But we used to have someone on town council that sat on the Admiral Social Services Board. I did it for a while, Nancy. And so, you know, considering there's a lot of needs between here and the Ben and Buckingham for people in poverty. And this could be a site for that. Because the benefits are statewide, you apply Medicaid, TAN, SNAP, EBT.
So maybe as a recommendation?
Yeah, talking to the social services director.
I mean, I was even here one day and a lady called up asking about affordable housing, because she was getting kicked out of her trailer.
Yeah.
And um, I think this is a typical uh. Call that could be better handled by county level funding than a than a small office here in town.
Um, the, there was a report just released called Stepping Stones. By U D A and its report on community well-being and children and families in Charlottesville and Alamo. And Buckingham was particularly mentioned in that, so the the inequities, property, children of color, et cetera.
Okay. So that was uh me with Alamo County, now I'll keep going about Flavanna, so um. We had a meeting scheduled the last month with Flavanna, but uh they had to reschedule, so we finally got something confirmed for tomorrow. Sorry, we didn't have time to consult in advance everyone's availabilities, but Javier and I just thought it'd be, it's good just to catch the meeting. Um, so actually, as a, I wrote this PowerPoint, the meeting's actually started at one thirty. Uh, it's gonna last for about an hour, so so thank you, Liz, you you might be able to join. So anyone else that would like to join, I think we can have two two members, yeah?
I'd love to join, wow. I've been shocked.
Um, but on the agenda is basically, we wanna brief them on the comp plan um, and then also hear about their comp plan. Their comp plan's been going on for a very long, long time. Their planning director has 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 left, so uh. Who we're meeting with tomorrow is the assistant county administrator, Kelly's remain. And uh, I assume that their their chief zoning officer is coming, um, Jason. He wasn't on the email, but we'll leave it to them um. So basically, we wanna consult them regarding this urban development area that um. As required by the Virginia, and hear if they have any concerns or thoughts. Then uh, we wanna understand if they actually already have a U D A designated in their part of the county, covering the town um. So I think that's a good thing to kind of understand, because if you look on the O P website, there's a U D A right out in Scottsville. And it's on the Flavanna side. So uh, this could have been potentially designated ten years ago or so, about a decade ago, but never kind of utilized by Flavanna. As a financing or technical assistance tool, and it's just kind of forgotten about over time. So we'll talk about that. Then uh, discuss technical planning matters. Uh, right now, the the boundary of Scottsville uh appears to be inaccurate on the Flavanna kind of G I S. Um, so uh, this could, you know, provide misinformation to people, uh, you know, for instance, looking at lots, you know? We're looking at lots of the boundaries kind of smaller than it really is, then uh, it could be difficult to find, you know, different information.
You know, I'm making this one thing to say though, I will also say, I've looked at the Alamo one, it's pretty close sometimes, it's it's inaccurate also.
Okay.
I mean, there's inaccuracies involved.
On the Alamo one?
I mean, it's just, I think it's, it's just when they're looking at properties, I I've looked at some of the there on the. Another, I'll just say it's.
Yeah.
It's, but it's not an uncommon problem. The only way that you get told they're hundred accurate is when you total accuracy is when you have a certain. It's tricky.
Right, um, yeah, I mean, this one just. Offset. But, look, I mean, we just checked the tech with them, I was suggesting we, you know, ask them to confirm if they wanna have it how they want them. I guess they're the county um. But um, then, you know, Flavanna does have some zoning in the Scottsville lots, all the lots, um, so we just wanna, I was just. You know. Confirm what their intention is there, is it just old uh zoning that was there since the before Scottsville zoning came into effect in the in the nades? And in uh, slow soil erosion, stream buffer, just like Alamo County, uh, I'd suggest we talk to them about. How does Flavanna approach these things? Because we wouldn't wanna. Uh, create some street buffer regulation that matches uh and harmonizes well with Alamo County, but it's totally. You know, off of Flavanna, for instance, I think we have to kind of uh double check those counties. So that's uh Flavanna tomorrow at one thirty P M, you know, uh, we're gonna be in this meeting room, because there's gonna be uh. Meeting here already. Okay, so moving on to comp plan text updates, um, so. Uh, Victory Hall, I I sent around again and that, I got a um. One uh. Piece of feedback from uh James Exchange, thank you. Uh, also, uh, Stevie just sent me some comments a few minutes ago that I'll take a look at. Uh, regarding scans input. So, um, but most importantly, like the uh potential for uh indicating Victory Hall as a, you know, resilience hub. Uh, is is now written in um. So, uh, that's of course a draft, depending on anyone else's feedback, so I'll also read Stevie's comments. So then the really planning area, thank you so much, Miss Strassner, about your your comments, so I've appropriated those um. And uh, Lisa, I know you you sent some comments, I haven't gone to those quite yet, but I'll factor those in. Then, just today, I sent around a draft of the conference of planning coming with requirements, so I I was thinking today, this is. Perhaps uh one of the most important two pages in the comp plan. So this is really talking about what a comp plan is and how it has legal uh be based on the Commonwealth of Virginia. So there was already text in the existing comp plan, but uh it was written several cycles ago, it seems. And uh, the code of Virginia has since been updated. It's, you know, living documented, and it could even be updated in this round of the legislature, but um. Basically, uh, it explains what what comp plan is, uh, what the code of Virginia specifies, and then what is required to be in the comp plan, so that's all these these bullets. Uh, most importantly, uh, footnote number two says that, uh, you know, this information is provided for reference only, please refer to the actual code of Virginia. Case, for instance, the code of Virginia could change in this legislature's slip session or next session. And then the comp plan's not gonna change for five more years of sorts, yeah. So this is just a guide, um. Yeah. So uh, just ask Javier to kind of print this out, and uh, you know, if you have time the next week, uh, kind of look at it. And uh, we we have been having some trouble with track changes in the document, uh. So if you see merged words or extra spaces, that's because of track changes, but please highlight that or any of my typos, and I'd be glad to fix those, of course. But I I do foresee this, this could be a great uh checklist, um. So uh, one thing that, uh, you know, for instance. Uh, surface water, this is bullet number four on uh the uh. First page, this has everything to do with stream buffers that we've been talking about. Uh, and these are, you know, important to to check in potential gaps and origins or planning. The one thing that we haven't quite uh had a chance to tackle is the requirement for um. Uh, manufactured housing to promote manufactured housing in coordination with affordable housing. Uh, so I think this is something I I wanna consider uh before the the next meeting. So if you, if you see anything on this list that you don't think that we've uh sufficiently covered, please be sure to highlight. Because these are the legal requirements. And I also sent it around the actual code of Virginia link, so um. If anyone wants to look through that, uh, that's the full full document, of course. Okay, so parcel data study, uh. Thank you so much, Lisa, for your uh compilation. Just wanted to kind of get a sense if, if it's uh ready for us to kind of make into a map or what what your thoughts are.
I'm so shit with my mom, I I'm underwater and I don't even know how to proceed from here, because. It's there, data's there, but I don't have a look at it and tell you what's commercial, what's residential, what's. I mean, you could figure out the state of land, because there's no address. But I don't know how to make it into a map.
Yeah. So um, basically, what I could uh attempt is, I could. Take that data and based on the parcel numbering or tags, I can merge it back into our G I S map. Assuming that that aligns. And then I could assign a color coding based on uh the the different uses that are indicated, you know what I mean? I I I chose not to project that Excel chart here, because it might have personal information of people, you know what I mean?
Public reference.
Pu- public reference, yeah. Um, so. I guess you had it open in your meeting now?
Yes, I have my email open, it's in there.
So maybe what I suggest, we to 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 kind of uh move forward on this.
It ended off. And then, went down there that. He was sending exactly. Yeah. Oh, I couldn't get it, because it's in sheets. Yeah. Here's something.
I think you can share it, you know, it should be a little bit in from your email.
No, it makes me go through sheets. Do you have your email on your phone? I just sent a request. Sorry to do like I T, I had a meeting.
Because I shared with you guys and and me.
Yeah, it might be a Google slash outlook.
And I'm logged into one of our Google accounts on this computer too.
You don't email me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Ah, here we go.
I don't know.
Okay, thank you, Liz. So um. Basically, the parcel ID should match up in in our G I S file?
It definitely should, absolutely.
Yeah.
That much I can tell you.
Now, we haven't got any digital ones, so maybe finish. So did the capture. The whole town.
Okay, so um.
Yeah, so in looking at that, I don't even have to tell what's commercial and what's residential. And what's multifamily? That's the other thing. Other than just what I know, based upon. The address or owner's name.
Yeah, let me just pull up our.
But not all of them shown, uh, he he actually found a piece of the data that has it.
Because uh, let's just pull up a comp plan here, I think this is what we were looking at last time.
But that's not necessarily gonna tell you what's commercial, that's the question that we want to know. Like, commercial versus residential and vacant and occupied.
Yeah, this was, I I assumed the estimate back in twenty eighteen, you know, before. So I guess uh, we go back to the Excel chart.
I mean, I think it could, I mean, is it safe to assume that. Commercial exists on, you know, a handful of streets, like example, Cocker, Spring Road is gonna be all residential or. Agriculture, but it's residential for our purpose.
Yeah.
Oh, shoes is on the top first. But but yes, so there's a business there, and that's the tricky part, so what are we doing with it? They operate a business, not a parlor.
Yeah, I mean, if it would be classified as a home office, then that's many people, especially during COVID.
So they do a man, they manufacture shoes.
Yeah, I mean, we could compare with business licenses, uh, for instance, I.
But I think that, I think the intent was to figure out how many. Actual. Commercial properties there are, not. One world.
Yeah. If I have on my list for my business licenses, I have the addresses out there.
So, but we don't just, we don't really wanna know the business licenses, we wanna know, like, what's, I mean, what if, what if the town council want that?
But uh, if I can maybe summarize the intended wire, the compound of half. A drawing like this, I mean, we would show them, uh, so we have a. Existing land use map, and then we have a future intended land use map. So there'll be a natural difference. So if, and you compare the difference and you see how the town wants to move forward. With uh. Its development or guide development in certain areas, for instance, if it thinks that a certain residential area uh. Has an intent to be, uh, you know, quieter, more peaceful place, then they would, you know, uh, not, not could guide businesses to be there. Certain types of businesses, based on ordinances, yeah. But uh, if if it finds that these uh businesses that are there, like a shoe manufacturer or such, are quite peaceful and and meeting the aspirations of the youth. Then those should be allowed or encouraged, maybe, well, depends, yeah. So it's really comparing that what's there right now, what we think is there right now versus what uh the town sees there in the future. So uh, uh, that shoe manufacturer is just one example, but uh, we could think about drunk cleaners, we could think about fire stations, like we've talked about earlier in this meeting. Yeah.
But specifically, I think councillor Hason wanted uh like numbers, how many of this and that we have.
Could the assessor's office might maybe have that for the county and then for both counties? If we're just looking for totals, they might be able to rob that.
Well, what would be awesome is if the G I S, when you get the data, would give you what's commercial and what's residential, I mean, that should be. Is your tax typically? So you would think that that it would be on G I S, but it's not, or at least it didn't export.
Assessor's office.
I think that's a good point, uh, because if the town was considering a real estate tax, uh, that that would drastically influence the value of, assessed value of the land.
Like, what their tax. You pointed that out with um, the building across the street. Commercial to residential and feedback to commercial. It was, it was disparity there, like the town had a runway and county had a different way.
But I I think any map that would be created for this, uh, really needs to have a qualifier saying that, you know, this is. I think any map that would be created for this, uh really needs to have a qualifier saying that, you know, this is a. You know. Best understanding of the situation at the current time. Because uh. For instance, I think we were talking about this purple over here in Fluvana. Fluvana County side. Is is there really any industrial use there right now? Uh it's right next to this popular street uh. SGP that went through, right? Recently, so. Yeah, I think this is a big, big question, but I think the intent is that we we understand what we think is going on. And we compare with the future aspirations. So uh I mean, let's just look at pop- popular sheet on the Excel right now as an example of.
Yeah, actually, you're right. There was an example on Apple Spring Road that um there were a couple of parcels that looked like they were zones. Commercial. And I was puzzled by that because I didn't expect that. Like jackpot properties and all that could just be.
Go down a little bit because the top parts.
There you go, those there. It's not the vacant lands, but they're.
So there's a.
Yeah, if you go right now, it'll say Fluvana.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think that that could very well be it because it um had a different name, there you go. Have a different um convention. Operating territory.
Now, on case I the. So for instance, uh we open up. See, this is the the boundary matter that is is a little concerning for me. You see how the boundary doesn't touch the line? So what does that mean? Does it mean it's smaller or, you know, I don't think so. But so for instance, let's look at uh. This popular, thi- this was the one that was uh. It seemed was purple on that map. So uh. This is the dwelling right now.
In our current living use map, it shows there are little residential. And then counter to label lots across the street. Seemed like they might have been more subdivided to go commercial. Or that or. Otherwise.
Yeah. So I mean, this, this is, of course, vacant land, it says um. So uh. Yeah, some of these lots are the ones that that I found previously zoned by Fluvana, that uh some of them are commercial. Uh I have to go back to one of our old presentations, but uh. Yeah. Don't know if they changed it or something.
But to Lincoln's point, the complaint is an opportunity to then have a future land use map where. Since this this portion of the van is in the cap, it's in the town. We can provide some direction on what intention.
So, yeah. Yeah, B one. So this is uh in terms of Fluvana, I said, B one, it's zone business one or something.
Yeah. But in that it's.
So but it seems like a uh Scottsville uh zoning, one of this uh su- supersede this business zone. Yeah, but uh. The other thing that, you know, I haven't seen, you see here right at the bottom, it says planning area, Scottsville community planning area, so. So they have designated a county planning area within Scottsville. So this is go back to that again.
So do we have a plan to kind of? Let them know that that's carrying something that's not so order.
Uh that was the intention during our meeting to kind of discuss this in a collaborative way.
I think those carries, if we were just leaving it because we don't.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't want to be a person wanting to move to the area and think you. You talk to the Fluvana County and you think you got everything sorted and you come here and you're like, oh wow, there's different requirements here.
So to the point when we had earlier meetings last year, we started broaching these subjects as as Lincoln was really digging. So I think it's just an ongoing project.
Maybe across the street and she came and she didn't know where she was adding her. Half of her property is on Fluvana and half of her property is in here, so.
So this is literally the edge case, like we don't have a better example.
Yeah, so I think uh I agree with Javier that it's just set up the intention and the complaint as a recommendation and then uh. In subsequent five years, work towards. Uh fixing or updating or some such that.
Yeah, that will help them because that'll have a reference document on our side that confirms.
And they've had some staff turnover and other other such things. So going back to the Excel chart we made. And I think this is a wonderful uh. Confirmation of information before I. I attempted to put in a GIS, uh back in GIS. I think I might have to. Merge the Fluvana versus Albano uh data lines and columns a little bit more. I'll see.
The first, I don't know, ten fifteen should be the same or more. Because that that's why the um. Yeah, on column A, that's why the convention is different. The long code that you see in Almorel, the short code is Fluvana, it's like. Me, sure they lined up. And there's nothing in full addressing or odd links and it's just land.
Yeah, it's a lot of data.
And acreage adds up. It's it's short by very little. It's only short by. I don't know, fifty acres or seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty.
It's a great starting point.
Yeah.
I don't know what to do with it from here.
So I think um.
I think that, but I think the land use map is is accurate. You don't think it is? And then the future, we could just make it whatever.
Well, I promise, we haven't been able to find this map. In the digital files, so this is. This PDF is all we have right now. But um. You know, for instance, um. Yeah, I mean, I I think the, I mean, I'm going to be here tomorrow, we, Javier and. Melanie, we could just sit together and go lot by lot. If mainly focusing on. Uh. The commercial and the uh industrial areas downtown and uh really compare visually. And then cross check with the Excel and then we make a qualifier. This is our best intent and.
I could be a year ago, maybe, in a better spot.
Yeah, so that's. That'd be my recommendation. We'll sit down tomorrow and go. Go through it, yeah. And then I would just recreate this in our. In our uh. Current GIS file. I I might recommend that we don't make as much distinction between the different types of residential. Because it's it's not in the whole scene of days. Single family, two family, multi-family, not that uh critical. I mean, maybe multi-family is quite clear, the only orange that appears is really the uh school, right?
School and then successful apartments.
Yeah, driven apartments, yeah. So maybe would, I would recommend we need multi-family and then we uh just uh have combined these two, so it's uh. Less in a private open space. Yeah, I think open space is important right now because uh that's really, for instance, southern development is. Uh a lot of their land is open space right now, but it could transition into something else really quickly. And of course, we had to update the boundary here, like for instance, fire station now, piece of town land, so it's important. Does that sound like a a good kind of attack? So we basically take the Excel file and uh. Compare with this map and then uh look at the differences. The changes over the last five to ten, however many years since this was really updated. So that will be our existing. Land use map.
Yeah, I mean, I thought, I thought the original. Ask was to figure out like how many houses do we have and how many businesses we have and. How many those houses were vacant.
Yeah, so so from from this, uh we call it. Updated or new GIS file. Ideally, um you know, be able to export or compare with this. Yeah. So ideally, this Excel chart and the GIS file will become the same thing. And then we'll able, we'll be able to very simply sort by use. For instance, so we'll see how many lots are of a certain use. And then uh the question of vacancy is is a challenging one. Uh because you don't really know. You know, let's say someone's uh. Elderly parents went to their retirement home, they still have their home, there's their things inside, but it's not vacant, you're you're right. So it's it's. Um that's a challenging question, yeah. So maybe uh you know, Mr. Heisen raised some really good questions, but maybe not all of them are uh achievable, but I think they're good questions to ask. Yeah, I I had his questions on the last PowerPoint that we did last month.
And letting me know, Jamie exchange letting me know that they've already done this for Adamoff County. So consult her tomorrow.
Okay. So I. Okay, good. James Exchange. Okay, uh transitioning back to the apartment, if that's okay. Okay, settle for many work. So uh tomorrow is Fluvana uh confrontation. So now uh I I. I plan to be able to send you the transportation plan, the proposed transportation plan Friday the eighth. So that's that's going to be a really important document regarding uh, we can use that together with this letter, I'll I'll sketch out the letter. To Albano County about how the. Uh certain intersections in in Scottsville can be prioritized either. Because of certain reasons, for instance, uh Tiger Hule is up and coming, uh. Future uh anticipated development along uh northeast of Hardware Street and a lot of hardware traffic coming down and meeting with twenty. At that uh. That intersection that has an interesting geometry, it's also.
That's a good question.
Sure.
When is Tyler's funeral opening?
They have a soft opening on Monday, the eleventh, and a grand opening. The next or May.
Yeah.
Could I answer over? Could I answer over email? Because I got the exact dates in my email.
You don't have to, could you say the time? I mean, I don't know what happened, but it was supposed to open in January and last week ever. And.
And the Mexican restaurant too.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about.
Does anybody know about that? Yeah, I thought, and I saw that they had gotten a word from it.
Yeah.
From the county.
Yeah.
Later, can I ask you this question? When you created the section where it takes some of the recommendations and. Attaches it to some funding ideas?
Uh yes, uh capital improvement program. Yeah.
As you did that, that's something we haven't done before. And it did take. And maybe to some level, everybody on the town council a little bit by surprise, so to speak, but I think it's actually where the rubber meets the road. And. I was going to ask you, what do you think? Could be done to help more on that front? Because that's really something unique to this process. I mean, sometimes in the past, when we have done a comprehensive plan, it's a nice document and there it sits. Yeah, what's different about what you added this time is actually it takes. This document and it somewhat sets it in motion a little bit. So I guess that's my question to you. I do think that's a new concept to us and if we go that route. It's not going to happen just because it's on the paper. So what kind of thoughts do you have about that? I know you intend more for it to happen in the past.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. So on the sheet of paper that you have printed off uh about the Commonwealth requirements on the. It's a. Second bullet point on the on the back sheet, so it wasn't really my idea, it's more of a state requirement, but uh. I and I don't know how old this requirement is. It might have been in the last five years, but uh.
You seem to have found something we haven't found before, maybe I'll see.
Yeah, so yeah, I don't want to take too much credit, but it is a really good way to to put these uh paper plans in motion. Uh I was talking to Laura Malusi uh a couple of weeks ago and and she did highlight to me that. A capital improvement program is Excel file was was being used when she was on. Town council of planning commission. Quite a long time ago, and I know the government services committee had a somewhat similar Excel file, so. I I of course don't want to take too much credit, but what we did, Javier and I, I think we were sitting at Canary Wharf. Winter break and uh basically uh kind of thinking about how how this can be used uh on a yearly budgetary process. So not not only as a five-year thing, but uh as it it flows into the budget process every year for the town. Uh and the town considers these uh expenses on a at least a five or ten in a four-year horizon. So if you if you don't set aside money for sidewalks every year, you're never going to be able to swallow a two hundred thousand dollar bill. For uh one block of sidewalk or even get a matching grant. I know the town had problems even the matching grant previously, yes. So yeah, and I understand some of these costs were surprising because once you add them up over five years, you you really is is a lot of money. And that I think emphasizes uh the the reason for maybe setting aside a little bit of money for a grant writer. Because I would, I will suspect you you spend ten thousand dollars on a grant writer, you might get fifty thousand dollars in return. You know, if you make that investment, something like that, five to one maybe. Um so I think tho- those are the things that I think uh. So Ms. Knox, you you suggested putting the grant writer in that document. I thought that was fabulous. So it's not only hard infrastructure, it's things like grant rider or other. Smaller things, like even the generator for that building, sorry, this building uh that Ms. Morse suggested be considered. I think that's an excellent. Suggestion, because if there's an emergency, what what buildings in town do have generators? I think that's a good question. Yeah. In emergencies, yeah. So I think the town is doing all the right things. It just takes, I think this. I think this company is is a great document to to kind of encapsulate all these states uh to answer your question then and uh. Yeah, that I think getting it everything in the company is the first step and then uh. The other thing that I'll mention, uh, we don't have uh. We don't have the uh the Victory Hall uh document. Turn it off, but do you have any knowledge about chance, Javier?
Looking at it kind of really. Uh, scroll down a little bit. All your planning should be pretty close.
So. I I'll just pull up Victory House as one example, um, because I think it's a really useful uh. Text document about how how to organize. Everything uh. Just. So I'm just gonna pull up the email if that's okay. Sure, I'm just gonna show. Yeah. Okay, so so this is Victory Hall, again, uh, this is updated text from the previous comp plan, so it's not all my creation, but it's kind of streamlined text over there. Um, and then uh. Basically, uh, the deletion is uh, and again, I haven't read Steve's comments as of tonight, but. I suggest removing the the committee on uh. You know, fundraising for Victory Hall, I haven't heard anything about that.
Yeah, that's gone.
Okay, uh, but then I suggest adding the green text in green, which is about uh this building as a resilience top, so forth. Uh, but most importantly, every section in the compound what I've done, uh. I pulled out all these small recommendations that are kind of scattered throughout the document and put them right at the bottom of each section, and it very clearly says, you know. You know, these are the the priorities in order. So the first one is designated Victory Hall as a as a key building. And number two, uh, never available funding. Number three, restore the downstairs and number four, four is modernize the theater. So I mean, I I look for guidance from everyone about, you know, maybe it's more important to restore the downstairs, I. I don't know, but what I'm sensing is the residency of the building is really important, yeah. For the community.
Yeah, Nancy responds and definitely said removing the fundraising committee is good. Um, and everything else in the piece is accurate. Um, if you if you want to designate Victory Hall as a resilience building. How would that impact the downstairs? Because the downstairs is rented to scan, so what what the vision on?
Well. Um, just make this second floor, mostly it's for. Communication with temporary shelter. Uh, example that that you used previously. Um, so I'm thinking of like an intermediate shelter before they open up. Their primary shelter being like Nancy. Uh, Yancy or the uh. Uh, fire rescue, like the county fire rescue. Uh, or it'd be a good area for, say, something that isn't flooding, like uh you had a gas leak on a block. It's like, hey, just come over here first.
I think that example I heard recently was uh, two years ago, a bottle of water was handed out here because of the heat wave or something.
Yeah, that's a good example.
So it's it's not really. A huge number of people crowding in Victory Hall, it's more of a, hey, come here if you need water, kind of a. Status plane, yeah. But if if there was something that in a, of course, I I have not been keeping tabs on Emergency Services Committee, but. If there was some reason to have a shelter, people sleeping here, let's say a. Uh, significant building, for instance, the Scottsville Apartments hypothetically caught on fire, where would all those people stay? For a couple of nights, would this would this be a suitable place?
So say, uh, a good example is they're gonna. Stay a couple of days in Yancy, use this for a few hours until you can get the buses. And all that logistics it up, so this might change a little bit, cause we've been working. Uh, regardless of the sudden emergency preparedness a little bit, so they'll evolve as different parties.
Just the the only thing, well, so I mentioned the downstairs being scanned, but also upstairs, we. Aren't exactly handicap acceptable, especially if there's an outage, you know. We probably wouldn't generate enough for a generator to be able to power an elevator, just something to think about. But of course, the facility that has emergency services and and capable people is is valuable, and we wouldn't. Need to necessarily have people.
I'll eventually quote out a commercial for that same reason. I'll eventually quote out some commercial generators for that same reason. This, we're brains.
But but I think this is a great first step and then considerations such as the generator and capacity and all. Handicap accessibility without the led, the elevators, these are all excellent conversation points, yeah.
Has there been any research or um historical knowledge about how? Towns receive money for people that have passed away or want to leave their legacy to Scottsville? And how we would manage that or how towns set it up? Like you would a nonprofit. If people are like, I wanna leave my bajillion dollars in Scottsville. We don't have anywhere on the website, we don't have anyone reaching that.
No, but I could ask around.
I'm sure there's other towns that have that.
Well, we can donate some land over here.
Yeah, I don't like, yeah, Van Clay, yeah, something for Scottsville that's like, you know, Barry Grove when he died, you know, he wanted to leave. Bane's books and coffee to his wife. I think there should be a better. More responsible way to, cause there's a lot of people that love Scottsville.
Listen, that's a really good idea, only thing I was gonna say is you might. Want to directly present that to the town council at some point.
The town council loves me right now, I would be here to purr.
You are loved.
It's just something that I think there needs to be an avenue to do it.
No, I I think I'm gonna go back and say you're totally correct, I mean, if we. I think at the moment, you know, as we've changed and we have different people involved, they're trying to find a new way to have uh.
Continue.
Get the ideas out. Absolutely.
Can you write that in the comp plan like in the next week too?
Uh, so that's basically be creating uh assets to the town.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a key word.
It's no secret, some some significant assets that they're giving to town that way.
So uh, those are all, yeah, uh, the resilience you have, uh, the assets for the town, so it's uh. Got it written down, okay? Um. Okay, so so the reason I wrote this up was again, uh. Streamlining the text, at least sections have like really all the recommendations clearly is a numbering system, so. Anyone in, you know, let's say we all strike lottery and. We are here next year, anyone to open up the comp and say, oh, Victory Hall, what's another one apparently, it's 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 this one, yeah. So I I looked to your guidance, if if. This resilience designation is the most important, but I I assume it is. Because if funding for the resilience hub comes, then funding for other things might come too. Okay. So, so now uh. As I mentioned, eighth of March is a transportation plan plus letter. To Alabama County. So um. The. Next meeting. Of this body is uh first of April, so what I propose to have. Then um. Is the the GIS map. With the the data. Uh, this is the, this is the big undertaking. So uh, that's what I'm targeting, yeah. And again, I I stress we only have the uh one GIS map from Thomas Jefferson, we don't have all the data, so I have to recreate some of it and then merge in the. The uh, the land parcels.
But one thing you may want to do, Lincoln, and I, maybe Nancy has, or I remind me of Nancy. Maybe you have some maps from the staff of the Fred H, who helped out with some. Things at the big nature area years ago, but he had some pretty good maps up and he. May have things he may not, if you want to share.
Okay. So uh, would the James Exchange know know about Fred, Fred H's work? Or is that separate?
Yeah, I think I think she would and I would.
Okay, so uh. Great, so uh, I'll I'll follow up on that, uh, maybe this this week, so uh.
That there's also some work that's been done by the park committee related to their map stuff, are you working with them or are they working with you?
No, it's, yeah, staying relatively. Within, I saw a quick draft, but I think they're planning on sharing that out soon with.
Okay, well, it was being more lengthy, yeah, it's still.
Well, that's that's good to know, I mean, I I also have parking map from uh from Jack, for instance, um. So uh, yeah, this is just that that point where we convince everything, Jack has also shared me a really good US government uh. Resilience plan, uh. So I'm just gonna cite that document in in our comp plan as as a reference, uh, Jack suggested. I think it's really worthwhile, just decided and kind of lead to it for future events. Okay.
And another point about maps, I remember Matt Lawless mentioning that. There was some group that was working on maps for us. And it's the one I'm linking on the.
Yeah, there was a kiosk map, map uh initiative, I guess you'd call it. Yeah, was this the current uh?
Well.
The graphic designer was maybe being hired for several thousand dollars, but that never.
This, is this, you do you think the people that were working on the zoning map will have what you're looking for? Cause they will see. Um, the the model that doesn't work with Scottville anymore, cause they work with counties.
Thomas Jefferson planning, yeah.
Management, thank you.
Yeah, so they.
They might have.
Yeah, they're the ones that sent us what they had, um, so um. You know, just pull up. It's probably under some of their names. Yeah. They should be, anyway. I'll I'll reach out to them one more time to to ask any more, they've had a lot of staff change over two, um. The guy that actually did the Scottsville maps last time now is teaching at UVA, so it might be easier for me just to find it that way. Uh, but he he can't send the data, um, but knowing if that map still exists somewhere would be helpful, yeah. Okay, yeah, so good, good thought, I'll I'll chase that down again. Okay, so I I would suggest we still don't put a uh date on a public hearing regarding comp plan, I think there's still a lot of. Things to be sorted out, and I'm not moving as fast as I I wish I could.
I can move it, um, so can we go to the track, the the document online to see?
Yes, so um. Let me. Let me see the easiest. Let me just send you the the link, I don't know how to find it in online, but I'll find it.
Do you have it on the drive folder?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the. Uh, I will say, if you open up the the Word file, it is a little bit uh challenging, because all the track changes.
Lots changes, yeah.
It's it's um, and part of it's not really changes, part of it's just moving things around, it looks like a change or. Uh, and it is sort of a change, but um. One, one thing that I might do, uh, this would be okay, I might just go through the document, uh. Maybe thi- this week sometime to accept all the changes and then we uh. I'll highlight any areas that are that still need updating in a in a certain color. Because it the track changes are really becoming too much, I mean, we just have to really compare. New document versus old document, you'll 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 see the difference, uh. You can hear some of it, so.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary to do the track changes unless we're working. On a document together, if it's between the old one and what they're doing now, I don't think it's.
Okay.
Pretty significant permissions to it. Based upon our leaving and the talk about getting rid of so much stuff and consolidating it.
Yeah. Well, Javier's uh. I found the found the link and uh pulling it up. So much.
Internet permitting.
Yeah. So once we turn off the track changes, uh, I think it's, so we will then fold it in the line.
Well, we can see where your building that moved.
My drive's kind of. My personal's kind of chugging.
So. Uh, computer.
Yeah.
So um. I want to open it again, okay. So uh, I'll just quickly go through, uh, but everyone can see the screen somewhat easily, okay. So uh. So these are just uh simple documents streamlining that or. It suggests, um, so. That's the basis. It's a little bit hard to kind of see on here, but uh. Okay, so for instance, adopted, this sort of day was was mentioned multiple times. So, and it was kind of like, well, this uh, how many times it's been adopted, so I I kind of streamlined it into a sentence, you know what I mean? Yeah. These are small updates, but uh, the acknowledgements have already been updated, so all our uh current town councillors. Current county commission, some a little bit not as mentioned here. Um, so. You know, delete all the old town councillors, so forth, yeah. So some of the uh, this text has just kind of been, uh, you know, proofread. Uh, these are various. Various people have gone in, this is Matthew Johnson, uh. Changed that. So support, so there's. Comment, yeah. So all the, all the the main changes have kind of been tracked. Um, Javier, you've also read through this, right?
Yeah.
Make suggestions, okay, I like jumped into the air.
And I think this was the really good suggestion by uh one of the members about many acknowledgement, so this was added?
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, the complaint I already did mentioned Monica Nation, so I think it's really nice that this is clearly specified here, yeah. Okay, so uh, table of contents, uh. So uh, this is uh, the the new new suggested table of contents, okay? Which one? Oh, yeah, that's always a difficult one, let's see where's, where is that?
Under creepers.
Oh, yeah. That's without the E, right? Or? Okay, well, I'll wait to try it later, I think I think that will. Thank you. I can hear it, so uh. A important update, I I think uh, for clarity, is that to move some of these things in the boxes. Uh, because previously, a lot of these documents of of. Uh because previously, a lot of these documents about Victor Hall, so when we were at the rear, have distorted from the text. So it was gonna get moved into the text in the relevant uh section. Yeah, so you see box three there, we showed her. So Victor Hall, yeah, and then all the maps are 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 now, you know, still listed um. Okay, so forward, I will just double check the start of that. Anyway, I.
That's correct.
It's correct, okay. So uh yeah, so for instance, we talked earlier about the comprehensive plan and common work requirements. So you can see, you know, this was half half of a new paragraph there. This was half a new paragraph here, deleted half paragraph, uh clarified these bullets. Yeah, kind of like reworded bullets, so they're updating bullets, you can kind of see there. So on so forth, yeah. So that's about fifty percent new at least now. Um so it it's sort of sketching a monitoring nation's own store um. This kind of proofreading and kind of streamline the text. I I would like to find the sources for some of these photographs, uh that that's a aspiration. Just not using people's photographs without citing them, but. Um so this is where another thing I need to write about, you know, basically just need to summarize the str- strategic plan that that was adopted. Based on on William's work.
Yeah. I wanted to just reference.
Yeah, this maybe I was thinking about just making that pulling one of her diagrams and kind of writing there. So I mean, this is another area uh really. The complaint has a lot of old demographic data from like the the early two thousands, so. Uh a lot of this data I don't think is available and updated for him, so this uh Javier and I were working over, you know, winter break. To end this, the leading stuff, uh there's a lot of this information would be uh more accessible online. If someone wants to find out a current. Uh piece of data, it'd be faster for them to Google it than just looking look it up in the conflict, which might. Contact would be up to five. Okay, um so uh so for instance, another gem that I I find really interesting was. You know, Nevada Water and Sewer Authority and uh Alamo County uh Service Authorities. Is actually in Nevada also, so just adding that bit bit of uh information is is really useful, I think, uh something to learn from. Topper sheet, so things like that are added in um so then uh. You know, this is one area that I want to kind of go back into the sentence and update the the point per figure, excuse me. That's why it's highlighted yellow. Again, this this is the demographic data uh from two thousand ten that has never been updated since, so is it? I'm I'm tending towards just believing it uh and summarizing it in a way that uh this is how his machine fail. Uh yeah, for instance, household income is. Is quoted as from two thousand, so that's really just not relevant or or valid. Things have really changed in the last four four years, so uh. Yeah, and the way that Scotts were broken down in the census of the uh is designated place, it's really challenging to get that. Granular data anymore anymore, so I haven't recommended moving it. Move your cell lines out of pocket. Um, okay, so. Yeah, so this is kind of housing is is moving under our weaving approach, so. That's one example why this is highlighted um as as a major goal. So again, this is a lot of that information that 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 needs to be consolidated. Okay, so moving on to existing land use, so a lot of this is existing texts or updated texts. So we we talked about this plan a few minutes ago, existing land use plan, so this is where it would go, the new one. Uh we the 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 compound even had a a downtown inset, so this is uh. Basically showing downtown a little more clearly, because the lots are quite small. So like we talked about orange there, the schools and ginger requirements, and then some of these are also designated as multifamily. Yeah, so now from the larger part, you can't really see all the orange very clearly, but looking here you can. Yeah. Uh this is something I do wanna write a a s- a small paragraph before after the new uh mom story, right? So I think that's a good, really fresh update uh. Uh I saw an article in the James Exchange about that, so maybe I'll get some insights tomorrow. Have a con- conversation now. So so this is uh really getting down to what Mr. Heisen I was suggesting we we hunt down. I think this is excellent um. So at at a time, the town knew exactly how many parcels, single family, two family. And multi-family that that there were.
What year? That was the two thousand and fourteen, what was that?
Um. So this evidently the source is Thomas Jefferson, county distribution, Alamo County, Fluvan County, so it says. It has been that this is a year.
What could have been from one of the different revisions?
Cause what Javier and I also did, we compared back the last four or five revisions, that the ones that we could find and uh there are a lot. A lot of things are the same throughout, but this is not something I I don't remember unstrucking back uh specifically, but we could, but. Uh this I I I highly doubt that this is from twenty eighteen, I think it's from the forum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think it's okay to cite staff that they should be telling you what year it's from. I mean, even if they're a little old, because the census data, they should be telling you what year it's from. It sounds.
Okay, um so this is the sort resources map, so of course uh nothing has. Technically changed on this fact, except the uh the boundary of the town, which is a minor update, but again, we don't have this map anymore. So the worst case scenario, we just reuse this this map. But again, the this is from twenty thirteen, but of course, nothing is really. The sort of reason, I guess the only change that is very recent is the factory is designated as its own. Uh historic district, right?
I would keep it out for the same reason that technically all of the south side is historic area under Alamo Mall.
Uh huh.
Um what I see here is town limits in the historic overlay district, specifically the ARB. And that might be a more useful item. Uh because there's different parcels here and there that the county just kind of put into our survey as part of the store register.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
So so we made to leave this this map.
Yes, yeah, cause our 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 historic overlay district is never gonna change, it's it's the original town limits. I mean, I guess you can change it, but.
I mean, we could overlay the county sort of this as one option um. But this is good at how it is for now. Like what I do, okay. Um so historic research, this is where we we you can see a lot of editing here, uh kind of uh updating the record. Um I think there's no one thing that we want to hunt down, we were talking about the solid and the eight contributing buildings, we just double checking that fact.
Yeah.
Uh so this is for instance, updating the text regarding the tire factory uh so so forth. Um again, this this map uh hasn't changed. Technically, this is basically the map of the stream buffers. Uh so you uh it's actually critical slopes uh. So this, the the topography hasn't changed, but we are getting a new FEMA uh floodplain map, but we haven't gotten one yet, right? So so this is still active.
Help this somewhere.
Yeah, so uh natural resources, this is really updating this to to all the. You know, focus scripts and things that we heard about stewardship.
Yeah, I might need a little bit more light restriction.
Yeah, so uh yeah. Floodplain, and this is how I, you know, okay, so new floodplain map does arrive soon and we can pop it in, uh that's just a reminder there, this is for. Yeah. Uh this is another very useful map of public infrastructure map, uh and again, I'll check the Alamo County. This is one one place that we could have looked when we were asking about utilities of Fluvan. And this is one of those things we're gonna discuss with them uh tomorrow, the utilities, they don't have this on their GIS.
Especially that high river line right there.
Yeah. Uh so uh this is transportation, this uh this. This map is uh road hierarchy, so this is useful. Uh I think it's just highlighting on the map the the problematic intersections. Yeah. So this is all existing text, but it was moved, that's why it's red, so it's not in text um.
Yeah, and can we update some pictures like that one there? Oh, that's the rescue's one.
Still.
They're a little bit older. Yeah, they're definitely a little longer.
Um that that was a a question I had, you know, you know, one opportunity is we could have a mini photo competition. We could have community members uh send uh photos of their, you know, favorite buildings and places. And then we can include those photographs in the in the conflict.
Yeah, it's great.
Uh with our. Yeah, with with the Facebook.
That's. I'll work with Melanie about that. Right, yes.
So what should we be doing with this? What do you want us to be doing with it? Do you want us to be going in to make comments to be edited? Do you wanna do that? Do you? I mean, it's kind of your problem, I lost several of your teams.
Yeah, uh I mean, what I I I I still think the.
Yeah.
The the single word doc, really simple, easy to to manage, uh comments like that would be really helpful. So what I can do, um I can parcel out one of these word docs, just simple files, you know, standalone. Would that be okay?
Okay, great. When do you want the comments by?
Uh well, if I send you a word doc, within one week would be really helpful um. So the comments I've received so far have been really fabulous, so uh and helpful in in various different ways, whether they be. Titles, attitude sentences, things that are outdated, so.
So you said this today, so do you want this like by the end of the week?
Uh yes, that that'd be by the by the weekend, that'd be so one week, yeah.
Great, and this is going into the complaint.
So it's it's there, uh we.
Okay.
So the so I'll just go back.
Yeah, I saw you, I saw you show that um.
It's just that the the tracking has made the document seem much longer than it actually is. Okay, so here we are, um so comprehensive planning and common work requirements. Uh so these are the the changes, um I didn't send. The track changes in this because it's confusing and yeah, but feel free to go back to the original document uh that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so so that's what I suggest. W- would you want one file like this for me? Would that be uh a good target?
I mean, I think it's crunch time, I think that should be that for a reason. Well, yeah, just kind of say four more. Well. I mean, there's two hundred plus pages.
Oh, well, that's just retracting.
Sure.
There are se- seventy pages of the.
Right.
Yeah, this is only two pages.
But there's there's particular things that you're concerned about that like maybe you could violate. Cause I mean, I think you're the experts, we should trust you in a lot of things.
Well, just like uh Victory Hall, for instance, I I don't know the history of what's been happening to the fundraising. Or intentions regarding the downstairs, the scams, scam single just know a lot, yeah. So I mean, I wouldn't wanna suggest something that I don't know a lot about.
Yeah, maybe giving Lincoln the discretion for some discreet items, cause we did the same thing before with transportation plan with the capital improvement. Uh program in the same way, kind of putting it into capsule, sharing it with the guys and then pulling it back and then. Holding it back into the new comp plan.
Yeah, so so for instance, like uh this stressing your your comments, I I opened up the email and I ended it, shared in the document. It was really fast, uh really easy, so thank you so much. Um so let's let's do uh one, one. Cluster pages per per week, a a cluster page could be anywhere from two to four or five, whatever, a chapter, excellence, yeah. And then if I, you know, don't hear any back within a week, I'll just uh send a reminder and then we we say that's good from there on. Okay. So uh this coming week will be the transportation plan and the letter to Alamo County, so that'll be a one bundle. I would suggest I and my parent, another pages too that I find that. Okay, so I I think this process will be uh most fruitful, because it's better than. Just me sending a seventy page document to you and saying, hey, do you have any comments? Um it'll be a more manageable. Okay, so um that's that's everything I think I had on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
So so tomorrow Fluvan County, we have maybe Miss uh Knox.
Yeah.
And then uh Lisa. Oh, sorry. Yeah. That's okay.
We'll see.
Super. Um so the the other thing for next month that I recommended was we need this uh getting down with the stream buffers. So maybe uh another cluster pages, I suggest. We really focus on environmental stewardship and we see how we explain that uh. In comparison with the stream buffer intel that Javier gains from Mr. Paul from the county, Alamo County. Together with what we learned from Miss Kelly last March.
Hopefully, this month I'm able to. I'm gonna try to do two birds with one stone. I have something else I need to talk to him, so.
Please note on your comp, there's litter cleanup on three to one three.
On this one.
For your for your stewards.
Mm hmm.
Of our river.
Maybe give us.
Children. People. Where's the clean of farm river or where the farm rivers? But it leads to the river. They can do the streams then. Okay. Oh, it's Porter. I got your email, I'm just jumping a little out, sorry. Um can you get us like a set of minutes each week? That way we don't have all four months to read it once.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
As I do, I'll send them.
Okay. Thank you. About just saying like when we if we have four, four um people. Ready? I motion adjourn. Okay, one favor?
Alright.
Okay, we're in halls.
Alright, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, lady. Thanks, lady.
Stop share. And I'll let you.
Uh.
Thank you.
Yes, we.